You know that I can't argue with you. So, very good. Yeah. Like, all the stuff. That's... I will use it, please. I know that means that I want to tell them. I can't see Paul. Whether I do it or not, I'm going to have to pay him. Anyway, so he should have. I'm sorry. Because I was starting to... I don't know. I'm sorry. I got very high. I got very high. Right. And then, you know, we're... So, it always starts long. I know I do additions. I just... Just some additions. Yeah. That's good to know about. Yeah. I have... I have so much. I know that I need to try and work with them. I can't see Paul. Whether I do it or not, I'm going to have to pay him. Anyway, so he should have. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But I managed to see. And I was ready. Because I was starting to... I'm sorry. 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 You know that I can't argue with you. So, very good. Okay. What time is it? It's three now, right? All we need to... It's hard to read, right? It's... Um, also, here you go. Right? So, yeah. Right? So, yeah. That's what they're going to say. Yeah. Right? So, that... So, yeah. Right? So, yeah. So, yeah. So, yeah. That's what they're going to say. Yeah. Thank you. It's your head one, huh? Yeah, you know, yeah. I'm faulted. Um, I'm telling you, let me start you. Of course, yeah. Right? So, that... So, yeah. I come right to it. So, yeah. Okay. So, correct? Yeah, I guess I have all your information. I'm working on that, so... I'll change what I do. Something like this. Make sure... Actually, I said it. Just to make sure it's correct, I mean. I don't mind doing that. Yeah. And then, especially like something like this. Dallas. It's work. It's amazing. So, if you don't want to miss it. Yeah. I know. I told you. I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, that's what I said. I think you'll love it. You mailed with all the contract. I was going to ask you. Yeah. It has phone numbers and... No, six. For those that I know, you can mail. It has two notes. Don, I just asked if you really need something to decide. Like, what that's like. I think you... You go, girl. You know. You're just guessing. Yeah. That's why I said... That's why I said... She's online. She's online. She's online. Has her channel. Hello, Mary. Everybody got a chance? Do you want to say something here tonight? Who are you? I'm Mayor Hicks. I'm... I had asked the council if you know my girl. I'm still with them. I still with them. Oh. That's right. Yeah. That's Eric's brother. That's how he must have done this. Eric's wife. How can you do that, buddy? Was he in the rain shirt? Come on, that's funny, Eric. I'm going to go over here. So, um, when I post that one, because you're not as strict. Like, we said, except people... I like... Do you come all the time for you to... Just... I try to come all the time. Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Did you get two? Uh, I just asked. They... Oh, they didn't come? They didn't vote? Yeah. They're all spread out. Imagine. Yeah. Pretty squirky. Yeah, she was here for eight days. Oh, come this. Well, gee, those guys were... Whatever that was. Yeah, there you go. Script. I like that. I always try that. Before we start this meeting tonight, is there anybody in the audience who would like to offer a prayer? Donald, your turn, maybe? Please.
While we thank you for the state, thank you for the wonderful opportunity for living in the beautiful city of Branson, Mexico. Yes, to help these guys, guys at Dallas, make good decisions to benefit the community and, uh, God help them. Thank you, Donald.
We'll call this meeting to order. It's about 6:03 PM. Roll call?
Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Mayor Cortez, you're on?
Here.
Council Sanino?
Here.
Council Dickens?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the presence of Jesus. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hoorah! Everybody have a gesture. Would you be the agenda? Want to take a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Councilor Kitana?
Yes.
Councilor Sanino?
Yes.
Councilor Dickens?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Felicia, did you want to talk now or did you want to talk when your item comes up?
I can go now, but I...
You sure? Because you're on the... You're on the agenda for, uh, for your presentation.
Okay.
Or if you want to talk now, then that's fine.
Let's just do it now and we'll get it done with. Um, Mayor Hicks, thank you for having me, members of the council. I'm Felicia Casados and I'm the president of the NMSU Grants Campus. And I'm here before you tonight to discuss a local general obligation bond that NMSU Grants has on the ballot during the Grand Sebelah County School Board election on February 3rd. So, our geographic area of responsibility is both Sebelah County and Catherine, but Sebelah is the only one that pays into our tax base. And, um, I'm going to defer at this moment to Leo Valdez, who's our geo bond advisor, to talk about that tax impact to the voters. And then, I'll show you some slides about the new facility that we're hoping to build. The local geo bond is requesting $7 million support for the first time in our 46-year history to our community to support us building a new facility. That will come in a few minutes. But I know the tax impact is very, very important to this community, so we wanted to start out with that. This is Leo Valdez, and he serves as our geo bond advisor. And if this, uh, bond should be passed, he will work with us on the sale of the bonds and the timing of that sale so that there is less tax impact on the voters.
For the record, uh, my name is Leo Valdez. I'm with the investment banking firm, a let's just say, Chapiere Company. I'm... We're based out of Chicago. I'm the manager of New Mexico and Arizona. Don't vote it against me, but I went to U-Mont State University. Anyway, uh, we have these straight tonight. Uh, if you'll notice this particular, uh, table up here, we'll show that we're proposing to sell $7 million in bonds if the voters authorize it. The college actually has the capacity to out to the voters for $9 million. But in our initial discussion, we talked about what they really needed, and it's $7 million that they do need. Assuming that bonds were sold for over a 20-year period, and that's the longest you can sell bonds, I think going interest rate of about 3% because the bonds are tax exempt. If you have a full cash... These are sort of the tax impact for various values. And I'm going to send some, uh, literature out here in a minute so everybody can look at to give you something that you recognize that you get every year from the county treasurer's office. But if you look at this particular, uh, full cash value is $60,000, $90,000, $180,000. That's the value you usually see on your tax bill. You shouldn't get that mixed up with what you think the appraised value is because that's the value of the accessory. And you only get taxed at one-third of the $60,000. The estimated taxes on $60,000 home or land or residential or business, it would be about $32 a year, uh, $2.67. And I just call it a new month in tax because it is because the college has no debt. We're not going to sugarcoat this. We go to voters, the taxes are going to go up. Based upon these values, uh, you'll see that the taxes on a daily basis could go between $9.13 and $26 cents. Uh, and I'm going to show you one, a particular piece of real estate of $180,000 that really demonstrates how this tax works. Would you please pass those out, please? And for those in the audience, uh, let's pass these down. Go to the next one, please. This tax bill is from the old economy. And if you look at it, it's a mobile home. You'll see the full cash value up there at $6,462. I'm sorry about the print, but that's the best you could do. You actually get taxed on one-third, which is $2,150. If you look at the school tax right there, that's $10,000 or that's a tax rate. And that tax is about $21,000 a year. The proposed tax rate, assuming the interest rates stay relatively the same, would be $1.6 per thousand for an increase of taxes of $3.44. Next slide, please.
A year.
A year, I'm sorry. Now, this property, you'll say, is a big piece of property. You know what that is? That's Walmart. Their present taxes, if they're paying for the school bonds right there, is $17,000 and change a year. If this... If these bonds are sold and the election passes, the taxes would go up $2,693 a year. I think the point is, this value of $4 million, it would hard to believe that that's really the appraised value of that bill. Next one. This again is Walmart. And if you see, this is their equipment. If the taxable value is $600,000, their taxes would go up $961. If you look at the left-hand side, those are all different taxes. So, it's not just the school that has taxes. It's, uh, the county, the municipality, the hospital, and others. And obviously, those change. And that tax rate is really affected by the debt bond payment they have to make. The school also has a 2% S9, or they call it a two-mill levy. That's for maintenance and renovations. Next one, please. This one is horses. And if you'll notice, the tax rate, taxes would go up $0.77 a year. Next one, please. This one is cows, for those that have cattle. Uh, the tax would go up about $2.56, whereas the tax rate for the school up there is like $18 a year. The next one. Uh, this particular is a residence. And this, uh, residence actually belongs to the president of the society. And if you'll notice, her house has a full cash value of $187,000 and change, but her taxable value is more like totally about $65,000. So, the impact of the taxes for this resident is approximately $100 a year. And these are, like I said, these are all from Sebelah, the county treasurer. So, I just wanted to show this because this sort of means, yeah, I get one of those every year. And so, I look at those and sometimes it's hard to comprehend what it all means. But is there any questions on this? In the audience? You, somebody? Thank you.
Felicia, you and... You and Eileen haven't come up with no questions. Eileen hasn't come up with nothing about the tax rate or how much it's going to help or hurt the city? Come on, Eileen, give us an opinion, girl. You're the economic director. Is it going to help or hurt us?
Mayor, council members, um, we had a... An initial meeting, uh, with the committee to, uh, pitch the geo bond to the community. And, uh, from an economic development perspective and standpoint, I feel that it's a definite asset to our community. It is something that helps us, helps me be able to, uh, attract business here for them to see a facility like this that not only is going to be offering, uh, programs to one of our target industry sectors, healthcare, uh, but it also provides a service that is much needed in our community, which is childcare. And to have a state-of-the-art facility like this in our community, uh, to improve the, uh, the health and the looks of our, uh, community college is nothing but a... But a benefit. I see it as a definite benefit to our community. And so, in order to get companies to come here and defer the burden from residence to private sector, we need things like this to attract business here.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to show you a few slides. And you have them in your packet, but I always feel that a PowerPoint makes more public impact. This is a rendering of what the facility... Facility could look like. And we are calling this a teacher and healthcare education and child development facility because we are trying to tie in our teacher ed and healthcare programs as learning labs and clinical sites into this facility. It is not strictly a child development center. Go ahead. Uh, this is a rendering from... It would be sited in front of Martinez Hall. Uh, you all are kind of used to the campus and you may have... You know, the berm that's right in front of Martinez Hall would be brought down, and that would be the back of the building, which would be the playground for the children. And we would take up part of the parking lot in the front area. We have more than enough parking. Uh, we cannot site it where... Where the current center is at because it has to stay operational because it's providing service to families, um, 12 months a year. Go ahead.
Will those, uh, those old buildings that are now housing that daycare and stuff, will they be erased after we do this?
Yes.
As a residential parking lot or...
Uh, it would add more parking to the campus, yes. We would probably try to sell those if they're salvageable. They were bought, used in the 1980s, so I'm not sure what will happen when we try to disassemble them. But yes, they will leave the campus. Um, and that is a site, an aerial view of where the building would be sited. It's the navy blue or the dark blue section. And it would not interrupt any of the activity, Martinez Hall. In fact, our master plan, long-range master plan, is to try and create more of a walking campus so that there's connection between buildings. So, the first thing you... You don't see when you drive in is a parking lot. You see some beautiful facilities and some activity. Go ahead. Um, this is the last slide that I have for you because you have quite a bit of handouts to provide you more detail. But this is the typical way that most community colleges and our colleague campuses in Carlsbad, Alamo, and Doña Anna generate revenue to build new facilities. We do get a little bit of funding for capital for construction from the state general obligation bond for higher ed every other year. But we've only averaged about $1 million a year. And the plant, when I got there nine and a half years ago, our plant was very decayed. We really have had to rebuild our campus from the inside out. So, that money has gone for renovations, and we still have many more to do. And you cannot build a new building for $1 million. And that is money that only comes to us every other year. And about four years ago, well, maybe it's six now, the state geo bond failed for only the second time in its history for higher ed. So, for about four years there, we almost didn't have any capital funding. So, as you can see, Carlsbad, Alamo, and Doña Anna have a history of providing local geo bond support. We have never come to the voters. It isn't that... That Sebelah County has said no to us. We just have never come to them to ask for support. This will be our first request in our 46-year history. But we have one mill of support right now, which is what we had to be... Get to be created, and that generates about $240,000 a year for us. But again, that mill can't build a building. And the state higher ed department has told us, we have an annual process that we go through before state higher ed for capital requests. And they have told us that without local voter support, we will have no new facilities at our campuses. They... They aren't asking for a one-to-one match, but they are asking for help. So, our goal, if this bond passes, will be to go to the higher ed department to ask them to match it, enabling us to decrease the bond. But our geo bond advisor has said, those are all unknowns. So, you have to prepare to be able to build this locally, and if you can get a match, then we can decrease it. So, that's why the $7 million price came. And... And the last slide is just a thank you for letting us come before you. We are not asking you to endorse this. The school board agreed to let us go to the voters. In the end, it's the voters that decide if they will be taxed. These are some more renderings of the building. But we wanted to inform you so that you're aware of it. And I did meet with the mayor and the, uh, the manager early in December. I love your breakfast, uh, meeting. It's... It really draws out a lot of people and a lot of nice information. And we talked about this, and the mayor and the manager asked me to bring it before the full council. And we were prepared to do that now in January. So, the... The ballot, the election is February 3rd. It will be on the ballot. It's the Grand Sebelah School Board election. There's only two members running because they... They're districted. But there will be, I believe, there's 23 polling places. So, at about one-third of the polling places, they'll have the school board member that's running. And then, our... Our ballot issued. But at about two-thirds of the voting districts or precincts will only be our ballot, uh, our request on the ballot. So, I will stand for questions.
Councilor Kitana?
Uh, I... Actually, I honestly think that this is a great idea, um, to bring into our community. That facility will be, uh, something that'll be... It could possibly draw some people to our... To our, you know, to our... Our city and bring us the revenue, the economic development that we needed for the longest time since the mine shut down. And I wasn't even here at that time, but I hear so many stories that this place was gloomy. But bringing in new things, new ideas, new things like this to... To our... Our city is, I think it's an awesome, awesome thing, so I would support it.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Senator. Uh, same here because this include any... Any work to the old buildings? Like, what you've been saying you wanted, like a... Like a breakfast-type place or a new kitchen or something?
No, those are the interior renovations that we're using our state geo bond funding for. So, no, this is strictly a brand-new facility. But we would move our teacher education and healthcare training programs, which we have a certified nursing assistant. And then, New Mexico State delivers the Bachelor of Science in Nursing program. Those programs would move into this facility. Because one of the challenges that we have now... So, this... The Child Development Center has existed on our campus for about 20 years. It's a public center. It's a non... Run by a nonprofit, Small Wonders, that is state-licensed. They have 55 slots from infant to school-age care. But we can't use it as a learning lab for our teacher ed students or as a clinical site for the nursing students because it's too small a space. Um, Jackie Hobbs, the, uh, the director of the center, her desk, her office desk is in the toddler classroom. That's how tight they are for space. So, this... A relevant learning experience helps recruit students and it helps retain students. And we believe it will add great value to our academic program.
Councilor Dickens?
Well, from 1970, when I first went to Branch, it's amazing change, and I'm glad to see it, and I think it should go through.
Thank you.
It's good.
Well, I think it's a great idea, too. Congratulations on a great presentation. We know that early childhood development works. We know that, uh, children who have early childhood development, uh, facilities and, uh, and, uh, programs like this are more likely to graduate high school and more likely to go to college. And so, uh, I... I hope it passes.
Thank you.
You know, it's... It's not... It's not going to be easy, but, um, just get a lot of the educators out, vote for it.
Thank you. Um, Sebelah has been... I didn't include that in your handouts, but I will get it to the city manager to share with you. We just found out about a study done by three state agencies that is targeting Sebelah County as one of about four counties as future investment sites for early childhood because of the high, uh, the low-income, uh, population here, the high need for childcare. And I think that will add great value to this facility if we can get this geo bond passed and built.
You know, guys, and I'll... I'll tell you, when we met with Felicia, I played devil's advocate, and I went after her real hard. And this is the result. I appreciate it, Felicia. You did everything I wanted you to do with it. You got all my answers that I hit you with back then. And I told you then I support it, but I had to play devil's advocate.
And I understand.
Okay, and I still support it.
Thank you.
Okay?
Mayor, we did try to stick to the seven.
Yeah.
You might explain to everybody what the seven is.
Yeah, no problem. We appreciate it. And I will explain it to everybody.
The seven P's.
Yeah. The seven P's. Rupert's heard of it. Any other questions, guys?
Uh, just one more comment. I think this is also going to create some jobs in our community, and I think that's important, too.
But this facility would expand the number of slots because there's a need, uh, from 55 to 80. And it would create, according to Jackie Hobbs, it would create five new position sites at Small Wonders for early childhood. The other part that I didn't mention, and I'll stop because I know you have a long agenda and you meet often at night and give up all your time. But we... With this, we foresee that we're going to be able to do more professional development training, like with existing, um, Head Start Centers or Child Development Centers or Family Daycare, where we could run training programs and use the center again as a learning lab for teaching people or helping to encourage the right environments for young children. So, it's... It's a win-win if we can get this done. And thank you for your support.
Thank you. Ms. Barbara Wesley?
Thank you.
Did she leave? She doesn't want to talk?
Yeah.
I guess she left, huh?
Go ahead.
Well, I guess we'll skip that part there. Public comment on our charter. Does anybody in the audience would like to comment on our charter?
Mayor, by me, I'd like to comment on our charter. I believe we are in complete compliance of our charter.
And on that note, I will put out there that we are setting up a committee. Laura will have people to do this, and we will have it ready by October, so it will be on the ballot in March.
About 2016.
Okay?
What's going to be on the ballot?
The charter. We're going to go through and clean it up. There's got to be 40, 43 notes, 46 notes, something like that. We're going to go through, clean it up, and make sure that all jives with prostitution and we're all covered. And the only thing that I could see being left on it as a note would be adjournments because the people obviously want their numbers. And, uh, I mean, other than that, we've been able to take care of it.
Uh, the councilors are not on... On this committee that are really making the recommendations and changes? The council is not allowed on the committee?
No, you can sit on the committee if you want, your mind. As long as we don't have a quorum sitting on that committee.
I just want to see what the changes are.
You betcha.
What the original was and then what it's changed to.
Yeah, you're... You're welcome to sit on the committee. It's just... My point being is that the charter has been let go for so long, and there's so many challenges to it, and there's so many footnotes on the back of it, that it's actually kind of ridiculous. And therefore, we're going to clean it up like Albuquerque and San Jose and the rest of our home rule cities do. They clean it up about every three or four years. Ours hasn't been since 2002, 2004. Um, so, we're going to clean it up fast.
I believe the council is required to vote on what's... What's going to be, uh...
Yes, before it... Before it goes into the ballot. You betcha. Okay? And like I said, that and, uh, the civil transit is another thing I want on the ballot for people to decide on that. And it's funny that, I mean, lately, we're getting calls on them because they're picking up certain people for school, but they won't pick up other people for school because the other people called first. We have school buses that pick up people for school. Okay? Civil transit should not be running around and transporting these kids to school for a year. Period. We have school buses that do that. So, and like I said, it's one of the things that when I was running for office that I did put out there because a lot of people asked about it. And I told them that we would bring it before and then let them decide whether they want to support it. The $260,000 to $80,000 a year, they won't cut off. And those are the two things that are on the ballot. Besides, of course, these two gentlemen's seats, which we're going to... Okay? Barbara, go ahead.
I believe the council is required to vote on what's gonna be...
Yes, before we go into the ballot. You betcha. And like I said, that and civil transit is another thing I want on the ballot. For people to decide on that. And it's funny that, I mean lately, we're getting calls on them because they're picking up certain people for school, but they won't pick up other people for school because the other people called first. We have school buses that pick up people for school. Okay? Civil transit should not be running around and transporting these kids to school. We have school buses that do that. So, like I said, it's one of the things that when I was running for office that I did put out there because a lot of people asked about it and I told them that we would bring it before and then let them decide whether they wanted it or supported it. The $260,000 to $80,000 a year, they won't cut it off. Those are the two things that I want on the ballot. Besides, of course, these two gentlemen's seats, which we're going to have.
Barbara, go ahead. You missed out. I guess you're out smoking. I don't know.
Not really. If you knew, if you only knew. I'd like to have you imagine that you have a business that you're wanting to relocate here in Grants, Milan, Sebelah County. And you're going to, you've already checked out the fact that you need professional skilled and unskilled people. And you know that we have a great hospital here, a good school system. And you've already spoken to the city council. You've spoken to the county commissioners and the village of Milan. And you're just about ready to make a decision. In fact, you've even found possibly a home that your family would enjoy. And you've decided to go through the drive-up window at Grant State Bank. And as you're coming out, you happen to look across the street. You're waiting for traffic to go by. You look across the street and you see a lady come by and right there in front of Myla Allen's office, she relieves herself, right on Santa Fe Avenue. And then you still can't get onto Santa Fe Avenue. And soon, a man comes by and just out of the, just to the side of Myla Allen's building, he relieves himself, too. So are you going to be investing in Grants with this scenario?
Okay, you've given us a scenario. Now give us a solution to that scenario.
I wish...
Because we are working on the solutions. We've been working on the solutions since I've gotten here. And the solutions are not as easy as you think they are.
I didn't, I know that it's complex. I do. It really is, and I understand that.
You know, and here's the thing that you've really gotta realize. A lot of those people are out there like that because they choose to be, they have houses out on the rez, but they choose not to be on the rez because they can't get no liquor out there. Believe me, Barbara, we are working on it. We've met with the Navajo Nation on more than one occasion. And we're still working on it. We even took Donald with us on a trip to go meet with the Navajo Nation. And it's for that very reason that we are.
Well, I would hope that we could solve the problem in a humane way. I don't believe in mistreating any of these people that are here. But it will impact, if it has not already impacted, our economic thrust that we're making. We're attempting to draw in tourists. We're attempting to draw in businesses to our community. And someone that's wanting to settle here or even retire here might not do so if they happen to come across this. And I do know that you've got challenges and they're huge. But we do need to see if we can't solve this problem.
And like I said, we are working on it, Barbara. We're working on it a lot harder than you or anybody else out there knows, except for maybe Donald, because we've included him and taken him by the hand to make sure that it's covered in the newspapers so that the public knows that we're actually working on this and not just blowing it off.
Well, I thank you for your time and thank you for working on this issue.
Barbara?
Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, ma'am?
You betcha.
Barbara, we had a meeting with Garland Moore about six months ago. And he volunteered his building for an apartment complex, if you will, or a place for overnight stays for people in our community. And, but one of the things he needs is somebody within the community that can step up and provide building materials or maybe a line of credit at our local diamond G here, where they could buy building materials to bring that building up to code, which isn't that hard to do because they have a lot of volunteers that would do it. I've seen the plumbing. It's all PECs and PDC, so it's pretty close to being up to code. And, but some of these companies that donate money for cleaning up our parks or, you know, they donate money for various things. If they could step up and donate some money to provide renovation costs for Garland's building, he's willing to provide the space for it. And I also wanna add that it's not a Native American problem. It's a problem across the board. You go to LA and, or downtown Chicago or LA and it's not just a native problem here. It's anybody. And I think the mayor is right. A lot of these people, you can give them a job, you can give them an apartment, you can give them a maid. And they'll still walk out on the street. That's where they wanna be.
Well, I know that Ruben has been working on this with a group here in the community. I just wanted to bring this again to your attention because I was shocked when I saw this.
Mayor, we should talk to Myla. It sounds like it might be something to do with her building. I know, it's a bad joke.
I didn't think it was that bad, Mike.
I don't know. I just know that it was disturbing. And we even at our office have seen those that have relieved themselves at the PNM building. There's a corner there that they come and they will, in broad daylight, wandering back and forth from the park to wherever they're going. We've seen that happen, too.
And it's also not just an alcohol problem.
I know.
There's a lot of mental illness out there that is just not being addressed in any town. There are very few towns.
But again, I want to thank all of you for giving me this time and just continue to work hard like you're doing. It will be solved, I know, at some point in time. Thank you.
On to the agenda. Regular city council meetings. Any corrections?
Mayor, I didn't sign that, but I have...
Go ahead, Eileen.
Thank you. Mayor Hicks and council members, I just wanted to remind you about our upcoming legislature session that starts next week on the 20th. Sebelah Community's Economic Development Foundation will be hosting our second annual, excuse me, our third annual legislative dinner on Tuesday, February 3rd. And you all are invited to attend, you and a guest and or spouse. And then on February 4th, we have Sebelah County Day at the Legislature, where we'll have 24 exhibit spaces in the east of the North Hall of History. And so we encourage you to be there, to participate and to support that effort. There will more than likely be proclamations read in the House and in the Senate. And so we would like members from the county, the city and the village and our board to be there and accept those on our behalf. And so we invite you to participate again on Tuesday evening, February 3rd, and on Wednesday, February 4th, for Sebelah Day at the Legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay, now let's do the minutes. Any corrections? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Kiton?
Yes.
Ms. Sanal? Ms. Dickens? Ms. Lewis? Number three has already been taken care of unless anybody's got a question for Felicia. Felicia, any last words?
No, thank you for having me.
You betcha. Number four? Number four, on you, Nora.
I provided an update on some of the things I've been working on during November and December. And I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I'm gonna highlight a few things. I've been working really hard to get the City of Grants credit card capability because so many things in today's times don't take a purchase order or a check that you have to pay online if you're ordering something online. And we're working with US Bank. And then I've obtained some other government institutes' credit card policies and I'm trying to put together one for us that I will bring to you to approve. Number 10, I've been working on to order the uniforms. And those should be in here real soon. The department's picked out, some of them picked different colored shirts, but they'll all have jeans. And they seem to be very receptive to be having uniforms. My monthly coffee with the manager's been going really well. We've had anywhere from eight to 15 people each month. And it's been really good to hear some of the concerns and ideas that our citizens have for improvements. A lot of the issues that have been brought to me have to do with the code enforcement and cleaning up our community, tearing down the old buildings, improving our streets and things. And so it's nice that I'm able to talk to them about some of the stuff we've been working on. And some people have brought to me issues in their neighborhoods with neighbors' yards and houses that they feel like need to be addressed. And so I've taken note of those and we've either addressed them or we're creating a list for the new code enforcer once we have them on board. We've reactivated the beautification committee and we've had two meetings now. And that group is willing to volunteer and help us look at issues on how we can make our community more appear appealing. Number 23, we've initiated the development of a new website that will save the city $1,500 a year. And Brittany's just about got that all done. And we've asked for all of your biographies that we're gonna put on the site. And we'll get that up and running in the next week or so. Any questions for me?
Ms. Kiton? Ms. Lewis? Sanal? Dickens? Mike Doocy?
No.
Outstanding, Nora.
Good job.
I gotta say, just keep up the good work, girl. Keep pushing. Update on the New Mexico Finance Infrastructure Conference. Who's doing that, Paul?
Give me that moment. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Ms. Manager. I'm trying to recall what we went over at the infrastructure conference. It was back in October. I didn't have any of my literature left to review, but I went over my notes for that conference. And I think one of the things that was asked about was, I guess, available funding and monies from the conference. There was a couple of seminars that I attended. And what we did is Jim and I kinda split up. Every session had three different, three or four different sessions going on. So we sort of looked at them and decided to go to, to split up and go to them. A couple of the ones that I went to, I went to one that was given by Adam Johnson, who's the financial advisor for New Mexico Finance Authority, talking about the monies available through Finance Authority. But those monies are generally all loan monies, very, very little grant money available, if any. Actually, he didn't speak of any grant money whatsoever as far as that went. The other, the only other conference that I attended had to do with asset management. And they did have some money available, grant money available for the planning portion of asset management only. And this money we've been aware of and we will take advantage of it when we get into our asset management plan on that. There was one other program that came up and it was a hazard mitigation grant program. And this hazard mitigation grant program, I talked with the gentleman that gave the conference, talked to him about the conference on that. At this time, we don't have any projects that would qualify for any of that grant money. I do, I will be calling to the state mitigation office and talking with Wendy Blackwell, who heads up that office, to get some more information on those monies in the future. And those were, those were the highlights of the seminars that I attended at the conference.
I would just say, I appreciate the opportunity to go to these conferences. Just some background, just some context. These conferences are run according to four tracks. And this year include a community and education, transportation, tribal issues and utilities. They had some great general sessions. There was a futurist who talked a lot about how the internet can facilitate transmission of not just speech or text, but actually data and how that data can be used to manage infrastructure. There was also an individual who is described as a sustainability consultant. And he talked a lot about green buildings. For me, the value of these is the opportunity to interact with other professionals. You know, I'm new to this and it's really helpful for me to just talk about the job and what the expectations are. So I had the opportunity to talk to somebody from Federal Highways, WH Pacific, which is very known, I call it, engineer Armstrong, who's our airport people, or Mexico Department of Transportation. And of course, Wilson and Cassell, those are accounting men there. If you're interested, I gave you the URL for their website. They published all the presentations, all the PowerPoints. So anybody who liked that, I can provide that. Some good information of those presentations as well.
What I was interested in is finding out, I was told that that is the conference where you find out where all the monies at.
A lot of it is more oriented towards process. A lot of it is more oriented towards process and in terms of where grants might be available in certain general.
Right. That's what I'm looking for, is grant money. Because that's what we should be looking for, money is grant money. Not money that we can borrow, we can do that anytime. Grant money is what I'm looking for.
There was one presentation in particular that I liked a lot, the federal agencies there.
Right. That's what I was told, that was the conference to go to, to look for money. I mean, because that's where you find out where it's all. That's what I was interested in.
And I also get a few slides, I can give you the agenda if you want.
Well, I love looking at it from your standpoint, of your job, where you would look for money for the city.
A lot of these conferences, these conferences that are beneficial like two years down the road, I heard something about that at the infrastructure conference. And then that's when I could, I mean, memory of these, you know, the information kind of fades over time. And there's always enough there so that you can go back and say, I remember something.
Right.
And then make those contacts.
Yeah, that's what I would expect you to do, to look at that kind of money.
But they're really valuable opportunities, so thank you.
Ms. Kiton? Have more questions? Ms. Dickens? Ms. Lewis? Thank you for reaching out for us. Thank you, guys. Eric, you're up.
Mayor, councilman, this is Manager. Good afternoon. I just wanted to start by giving a quick update of how this project progressed over the last month, a college road bridge. December 9th, we had a open bid, we opened an open bid here at City Hall. We received one bid and that was in response to an invitation for bid that was advertised for four weeks in the journal and in the weekend. That one bid came in at $744,200, which is over the city's budget. At that point, working with staff, Mr. Penney and I decided that we'd reject that bid, and Jim. And we utilized CES to procure the project and give us some flexibility. Get overall best pricing and value. So we started negotiating with Century Club Construction. And they submitted a bid totaling $628,594.73. That number includes the CES 1% administrative fee and NMGRT. At this point, Wilson recommends that the City of Grants award the College Road Bridge project to Century Club Construction. Century Club Construction has proven history, performing work on several projects for the city. And they are a qualified CES vendor. And I'm here to take any questions.
Ms. Kiton?
Does this set us back on our deadline timeframe for beginning project, anything?
We're still holding to that March 2nd deadline. And actually, if it's approved today, we have some activities that Paul's crews are gonna start on, some demolition. So they'll be demoing the bridge and the road and building the temporary road while Century Club is securing the bridge and the permits. So within the contract, we have no later than March 2nd. That doesn't mean if they get everything and they're ready to start February 15th, they can go ahead.
Is this the veteran that gets the 10%?
No, there's no veterans preference in this. So that, those preferences and preferences only apply to a bid that went out for advertising. It's an invitation for bid.
Ms. Dickens?
Would you say it was gonna be demoing the bridge? Our people?
Yes, sir. And the roadway.
Start as soon as this is...
As soon as we get it approved and pending scheduling.
Yeah, we're, presently, the manual is getting prices for the culverts that we're gonna have to put, several culverts. And we're gonna have to put nine culverts in place. So we're gonna have to make several trips to Albuquerque picking up these, each one of these culverts. It's five feet in diameter. And we'll need, there'll be three rows of culvert, 60-foot long. And so obviously, we can't carry a 60-foot culvert. So they'll be cut down to 20 feet each, so we'll need nine of them. And so we'll get those, as soon as we get those, then we'll start building the bypass road. So we can get them pretty quick. So once we get that, those prices, then we will get that.
Ms. Lewis?
Does the, is Wilson engineering fee included in the 628?
No, that's a separate task order. So you should have one attachment that includes our recommendation as our engineer's estimate. That's 628... That six hundred and twenty-eight, five ninety-four, seventy-three cents is just the construction cost.
If you look at the next page, Mike, at number seven, the ancient taxing sixty-three thousand, one eighty-six, sixty-one plus tax for the construction management of the project. I've got no questions, guys. I just know that this bridge has to be done. And on that note, I'll entertain a motion to give this project to Century Club.
I make that motion with the project being given to Century Club.
I second. Can the amount of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-three cents?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
Now, tell them about your fee, Eric.
On our task order, first, I just wanted to really thank all of you for allowing us to submit this task order. We are on call early, this is expired. We designed this task order around CES procedures, similar to what we're doing here with the construction cost. Our major items, our scope is project management. Part-time observation, thirty-two hours a week while an inspector on site. And pay application requests, review materials, submittals, process, R F Is, change orders, host construction progress meetings, pre-cons, final closeout meetings, walkthrough, all of our typical construction management services. At this time, we're just asking your consideration to approve this task order through CES, which includes a one percent fee at sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixteen more cents.
Mayor, I have a question. Going back to project management, there's been some issues in the past of onsite inspector being available. And I wanna ensure that we do what's right this, on this project and make sure somebody's, and this is for future projects for that matter. We have somebody there on site, like you just told us.
Yes, sir.
Monitoring everything that's going on with the entire project. I don't want things cut, no corners cut, especially with the problems that we've had trying to get somebody just to bid on this project. I wanna ensure that this bridge lasts us fifty years, if that, if that's what it does. But, and the reason I bring this up is because on the First Street project, there were several times that I went out and I couldn't find anybody that was watching our contract. So I had an agreement with Mario that we would have somebody available and that wasn't the case. So if you could, I'd like your word. And I would like somebody out there monitoring this project.
Yes, sir.
In its entirety.
You say this is for thirty-two hours a week, right?
Thirty-two hours.
But they're gonna work probably sixty hours a week?
That's to be determined in our pre-con.
You know, I mean
So in the past, they've done four, four days a week, ten hours a day.
Yeah, fifty, sixty hours a week depending on what's going on. Paul, that's gonna fall back to you and Jim. On the days that they're not there, one of you guys will be out there monitoring that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And Mayor, the reason I bring this up is because
I don't know, you bring it up, Michael.
I come from a construction background from the, from where I currently work. And I used to work in the field of inspection. Now, I know when the contractor does what he needs to do under the, under the rug per se.
Right.
He'll do that when nobody's watching, just to make some more money for himself. And that's, it's always happened like that. They try to get substructures completed as quickly as possible so they can throw dirt on top of it, nobody will ever know. And that's the way it always goes. So I would like to see this monitored, like I said, from, you know, once the first time that they, they got it, get in there and start digging up, they, they break, break ground and they complete the project completely. We're trying to get this completed for, for our community in that area, North Hills area. This has been one of my big issues since I was brought into office. And that's what I ran on. I ran on getting a bridge built for these, these individuals in North Hills. So I would really like to see this completed the way it should be.
Yes, sir. Counselor Kitana, you have my word that we'll take full responsibility, we'll have someone out there maintaining and doing the right thing every day.
Like I said, they're not, you guys got it.
You weren't here, but we had a lot of problems with First Street.
Oh, yeah. And I mean, the sense of projects that I've been in charge of, the two sewer projects, we've had someone there every day and they went fairly smoothly with us.
I just hope we learn from that, you know, from what we went through with First Street. And what we did, let's not do that anymore. We did that. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that people don't know about that we're still trying to fix on First Street and get it done. But I don't want that to happen for this project or for anything else in the near future.
I'll make a motion for task order to approve task orders.
I got one question.
Go ahead and do the motion, go ahead with the motion.
Task order zero, one, zero, five, one, five, for all the goods, construction management, Jim Wilson and company. Four, sixty-three, one, eight, six, six, one.
Plus taxed.
That includes
This is excluding tax.
Yeah, so plus the tax.
That was my question.
Okay, now a second?
I'll second on that.
Second, okay, Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis, discussion. Not only do we have your promise, but it's gonna be in the contract that you guys are gonna have somebody on site thirty-two hours a week.
Yes.
And
Well, more meetings and so on.
Right. So if they hold five days, this is based on a four-day schedule.
Yeah, and if, and like I said, whatever they don't cover, Paul and Jim will cover. Their project, he's project manager, Paul's our public works director. So if they're not gonna be there, you guys are only gonna be there four days, and they got Friday left over, we need to know so one of these guys can be out there watching that project.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that there's compaction tests that are, that are gonna be monitored as well?
All testing, so our inspector, our observer is a certified inspector. Of course, them guys.
They will even be doing concrete, uh,
Make sure the concrete is
Make sure the concrete's correct, you know. Everything's right on the concrete. So they need to do those, that testing to be completed on the blankets that'll be done on, on that, that particular project.
That's one of the problems we have with Nimitz Bridge, the concrete didn't meet
Didn't meet spec.
We had to go take it back out. Just one of those things that happened because somebody wasn't there, inspector checking it out. And you vote.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Kitana, I'll, I'll, I'll help you monitor this project too. I know that it's yours in, in your district, but let's just put these guys on notice that we're gonna stop in at any time. We expect to see a, an inspector there.
And then one thing to add to that. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Send a courtesy mindset once we get the structural mindset.
Okay. You know, and, and I'll tell you, Eric, this one's kind of geared to my heart too, because I've been pushing this for over eight years. Since I first came on the council, eight years ago, it was one of the first projects I ever won. I could never get any support from the previous administrations on it. Now we're gonna take care of it. Because if we don't, this year, they're not gonna have no place to get in and out of that neighborhood, do you?
Uh, on that note, we don't wanna make that long for it.
That's right. We're gonna get on that one the next time around. Okay, on that note, we're done with that. Thank you, Eric.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. This next one is mine, guys, and I put this in the package so that you guys could look at it and decide if we want to pass these two resolutions. They'll basically be the same thing as these if we decide to do it. But as far as it goes, I just, I don't see how this affects us because we're already doing what Santa Fe is asking the legislature permission to do. And the reason we're doing it is because our charter allows us to do it. I don't know what Santa Fe's charter says. All I know is what we're doing here at Grants, okay? So if you want, we could actually, we could either pass these two resolutions or we could pass our own resolution in support of what Santa Fe's doing.
Can we get an explanation, please, Mr. Mayor, so the citizens understand what we're discussing here?
The city of Santa Fe has asked us to support them by passing a resolution as they are passing, where it takes off taxing limitations and whatnot on their governing body because they're fixing to get mailed with the food tax. They're fixing to lose about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year due to the food taxes going away. It doesn't affect us at all because we are under ten thousand people. That may not be the case in another ten or fifteen years. We might be over that and then at that point, it will affect us. Another municipality that is affecting is like Silver City, because they're ten thousand, five hundred, and they're a home rule state like us. So, I mean, that's why I put it in there, guys. I, I know what we're doing here in the city and we're doing everything that Santa Fe wants to do, but it's because our charter allows us to do it. Like I said, I don't know what Santa Fe's charter is like. So I throw it, I throw it out to you guys. Do you wanna support this? Do you wanna pass two resolutions like Santa Fe has or do you just wanna put a resolution in support of Santa Fe? There's only, because either six home rule municipalities in this state and we're one of them. Santa Fe's one of them, Las Cruces is one, Silver City, uh, I don't know, I don't know, Albuquerque, I don't know one more. I can't remember which one, might be Las, but I'm not sure.
I think we should support Santa Fe.
You guys wanna support it, okay?
Well, I, I'm ready to hear, but I'm ready, Councilman, the municipal league is, is what they're also.
Yeah. Well, the municipal
Something else.
The municipal league wants to bring back the food tax. And as you can see on that next article, the Santa Fe mayor, the reason that he's doing this is because he doesn't wanna bring back the food tax.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm against bringing the food tax back, guys, to be honest with you.
Well, so is the government.
Yeah, so it's not gonna happen, not, not for four years. So if, if we wanna do a resolution in support of Santa Fe, resolution, we can do that. And, I mean, we'll, we'll put the number on it as
So the, so the resolution allows them to impose taxes on other items we can sell?
Yes, like we do. We've got gasoline tax, we've got a public safety tax now that's based for some of our police officers raises. I can't think of any other tax. We've got the bond issues, of course, but those are the taxes that we've imposed by and of through our charter. And that's what they're asking of you. And like I said, I don't know what their charter says. I know our charter allows us to do it, that's why we've done it. And that's why we're paying taxes, because we actually have a little money paid. Yeah. So on that note, what do you guys wanna do? I mean, I'm open.
I'll second. I'm, I'm, we're gonna
Motion with support.
We're gonna support, we're gonna make, we're gonna do the resolution in support of Santa Fe. And you'll second it? Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Then I'll get with Denise and I'll, we'll draft that and then sign it and we'll get it up sent. Okay? We'll get that done. You go, girl. Okay. The last thing that we have is the golf course advisory board on you, Eric.
You got five applications, do you have the names in your packet?
Michael Hawkins, Ralph Chavez, Andy Mirvoll, Wayne Worth, and Ray Barunio.
So we have five individuals that are willing to be a part of the committee and help make recommendations and give advice on what they think should be occurring at the golf course that we can include. So my recommendation is that you select those five individuals and we'll get them.
And I agree. All heart and Motion.
I'd make the motion to go ahead and, and let's go ahead and implement set those five names into our golf, our golf course advisory board.
Counselor Kitana?
Yes.
Counselor Sandoval?
Yes.
Counselor Dickens?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Yes.
That concludes the meeting. Comments from the council, Counselor Kitana?
First of all, Counselor Lewis, I just wanna say thank you for your help monitoring. I get a chance to help you to give the thank you on helping monitor the College Road Bridge project or the project. If you guys do get a chance to swing by, do it during, during project. Even if you go from demolition stages all the way to them building it, it kind of gives you an idea of how they do things. So, plus, I think what Eric brought up too was giving us a copy of the project plans. Gives us an idea of what's gonna be put in place, that kind of thing. Pre-con, I would really recommend that maybe one of the councils maybe attend that pre-con. One or two, we can't really have all, all of us there, but I think it'd be a great idea. That way, there's any questions, comments that do come up from the contractor at that point or anything that we wanna bring up to his attention, he can bring it up at that point. On that note though, I believe, Paul, if, I had a complaint, I had a complaint regarding a vehicle that's broke down in El Capitan Loop that's been there for quite some time and it's on the sidewalk. So if
You could have?
Yes, if you could, go take a look at that and see if we can get that removed. And it's from a resident that does live there. It's not his, of course, but it's somebody else's that, that he said that it's right in the middle of the sidewalk or on top of the sidewalk. And I, I'm hoping that everybody had a good, safe holidays. Looks like we did, you know, survived, we all came back. So I really look forward to my last year in office to do, do what's justified for the City of Grants. Thank you.
Counselor Sandoval?
I'd like to find out where we are with the bidding process or what's gonna prove, is it done?
Cool, I'll scratch it off my list. We have the EnviroTech, which is the company that was awarded the contract of that, is now in the process of giving us a bid for the asbestos testing and mitigation.
For what? What was the, what, what happened?
For all the properties, all the properties have to be tested. That was gonna be, that was part of our, in the bid package for this, that whoever was awarded the contract would then give us a bid for the asbestos mitigation. And so they're, they're doing that now. So they, they're gonna be sending down, I talked, I talked with Dan Kelly today and he's gonna have somebody down here, I believe, either at the end of this week or beginning of next week doing that.
I thought that process was supposed to be the first, first, before we're gonna do that.
Well, we decided when we went through it to do it, it would have held up our bidding process longer. So to expedite the bidding process, we decided to do it as part of the award with the construction company.
Well, I was baffled, you know, like I say, the first building on Third Street, I mean, you're not a part of this. I mean, why couldn't they just get the money? This, this has never happened.
That one's already been bid on, right? And awarded.
They all are.
They all are.
Been, been awarded on, that's what we're asking where we're at.
That's what I'm saying, why, why they all are, yeah.
So, so they'll come in and, and they'll do the, the testing and give us a, a price on the, on the testing and mitigation.
How long does this process take, Paul?
Oh
Or have you seen it?
For the construction?
Well
Or for the demolition?
Yeah.
Or the whole process?
The whole process from, from getting this testing done, it seems like this is what's slowing us down.
We'll, we'll be done completely with the whole process, everything cleaned up within sixty days.
Is that total, all of it, or sixty days per?
No, all of it, that's all of it. It'll take them, I was talking to Dan today and he said, once we start knocking it down, he says it should take them no more than two weeks.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting over and getting it locked down. Eddie?
I'd gotten a little piece of paper in my box and I forgot to bring it up last meeting. I didn't want everybody to get that piece of paper. Individual, about the ticketing process from the police, about the writing the checks and stuff on the municipal order. Yeah. I, I know the court doesn't take checks. They take money or money orders, cashier's checks, they got an individual check. And I guess the person's problem was that on the ticket itself, it says that the court takes checks and they don't.
They approved that, they approved our check.
Yeah.
They have a check.
Yeah, I'm asking you. I knew you'd catch on.
I didn't, I don't have any control over the courts.
You mentioned, none of us do, man.
Well, I know you don't have any control over the courts, but I've got a ticket for a while, I've gotten tickets, but not one for a while. What is written on it about writing a check or, or anything?
Citations that we get are printed by the state, use state citations, so they're, they are a, the court, when it goes to the court option, the court, individual court sets up the standards for that. So I'm not aware that they don't take a personal check.
You know, the, the municipal court.
Maybe it's because they've had a bounce too many times.
Right, right next to your office, they don't take checks.
And she, like I said, he doesn't have any say over what, what police And she, like, like I said, he doesn't have any say over what, what Elise does, just like I don't have any say over what Elise does. She's an elected official, just like us.
Okay, well...
So why don't you go talk to Elise and see what she can do to help me out, Eddie?
I, I was just gonna make a comment. I, I know you don't have any control on how the ticket is printed out, but maybe your officers could inform them if they go see a lease, they better bring the cash at hand.
We are not allowed to do that.
We're not allowed to?
Like I said, give her the lease, buddy.
I'll, I'll check on it and see what we can do.
We, we try to make some changes to the citation of the state when they're proving.
Well, I know she works with people. She'll say, you know, give me a couple of dollars now and make payments and stuff. She's good about it.
Counselor Lewis?
Well, I got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
From, what point to what point does Main Street cover on Santa Fe Avenue?
Manuel, is he out there? What do you mean it's?
It's from Grand State Bank to... All the way to the end of the road over the freeway.
That's east?
Yeah, it's all, that's all city limits.
No, 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 we're talking about the Main Street project. Main Street project. There you go, Elaine knows.
Oh, Main Street.
Elaine knows.
So currently, uh, the, the district goes from, I believe, from, um, the West Theater to First Street Cafe, and then as deep as Stevens, uh, back this way, and then cuts up to High Street.
And right now, we're in the process of trying to extend it down First Street?
I believe so. We're trying to, I don't, either expand the district or widen it and lengthen it. It's my understanding.
Can they lengthen it to cover the, the whole Grants? Not, not, I mean, on Santa Fe Avenue.
So what?
You would have talked to Main Street about that, Eddie.
What were you cut off Santa Fe Avenue?
Cause they're trying to extend it down First Street right now. Okay? So I would suggest you get with Manny on Main Street and see whether it is your problem or what you wanna do. And why you wanna extend it.
As the Economic Positioning Committee Chair for Grants Main Street, uh, the purpose, uh, the committee that I'm on is obviously to, uh, enhance and facilitate economic development. Uh, when we do work on Main Street projects, we do work with those businesses within the district. However, my committee and as Economic Development Director, we are working from the east end of Santa Fe all the way to the end of Milan Route sixty-six. We consider that all Main Street. And so for everything that we do in the district, we try and work with businesses out of the main district, Main Street district as well. That way, um, we're working on the entire stretch, uh, together. But, um, I believe they're trying to redefine the boundaries of the official Main Street district at this point.
Thank you. Donald, uh, Mayor, real quick, uh, two years ago, I believe, Marty McBride was involved in rezoning the town whenever we passed those new, uh, quarter ones and codes. Anyway, when that took place, the Main Street district recognition by the city was removed. I don't know if you remember that. The city actually does not recognize the Main Street district on, in the zoning.
Well, then I guess we need to fix that, don't we?
That is correct. What needs to happen is the city council needs to go back and adopt the Main Street Comprehensive Redevelopment Plan. And once you do that, then Main, Main Street can get back to the business of revitalizing and redeveloping the Main Street district.
Make sure that we're on that.
I'm, and I've been talking with a gentleman named Charlie Dean's, and I believe he may be coming in February to do a presentation on the redevelopment plan. And then he can move it back in. Yes, and I think what, I think, uh...
We need it back.
Maybe the, the component there that people don't understand is that it's not that Main Street only wants to concentrate on those businesses in the district. It's just that that is a starting point to build from in and then move outward. Um, it won't be just those businesses in the district that'll be worked on by Main Street, but that is a starting point to, to do infill and then work outwards to, uh, for redevelopment and revitalization.
Thank you.
Do, do you remember if that was because that, uh, Sacoletti's property was going to be included? On the south side of Santa Fe Avenue?
My recollection is that there were businesses out of the, outside of the Main Street district that were...
Right there, it was Sacoletti's property on the south side of Santa Fe Avenue from the west end.
Not happy about...
That property right there.
What was going on with the revitalization plan and that they weren't included. And it's not that they weren't going to be included. It was just that the area designated to start with was defined as such, and then once that was built out, the district would grow accordingly.
Main Street, you're welcome. You gotta do it, bring that back.
So that's why...
Discuss the zone then. When we, when we bring it back in, cause we're gonna bring it back in. We are a Main Street community and we need to recognize that.
That's what we're given.
Okay, so we'll bring that back in and then we'll discuss the boundaries once we get it back in.
And so that way, that's why economic development, working with Grants Main Street, tries to work both in and out of the district to show the community that we're not just working on or within the boundaries, but we're working on all of Main Street. Santa Fe from the east end, uh, where, you know, the visitor's center is, all the way to Milan. You know, where the railroad crossing is to go on six oh five, pretty much.
Counselor Lewis?
I'd just like to say one more time to Chief Vanderburg, thank you for the efforts that, uh, you've put forth since you've come into, um, to this position. I, uh, appreciate the message we're sending to thieves and to drug dealers in this town to leave. They're, they're not welcome here. Go ruin some other town. And, uh, so just keep pushing and, and, uh, so, so we can send that message and keep it clear to them that we're not gonna stop hounding them until they're gone. Thank you.
Ditto.
Mayor, on that note, and I kinda, I wanna run something. And actually, this is, this is a, this is actually a little thank you to, uh, our city manager. Um, to be honest with you, I love getting messages that, um, we, we're doing something in our town. And, um, it's an awesome thing. My kids even get excited when I, when I get that message. They say, well, what's, what's going on there? And, you know, it's, it's a positive step that we're taking for our community. It, it's amazing that therefore, the longest time, nothing was happening. And now, since you've been in your position, chief, and we're, we're on it. So I would just wanna say thank you to you and your, and your staff.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Mike? Um, I got a couple things. Me and Laura met with Waste Management. I did threaten to fire them, just so you know. Um, and they promised to, to pick up what they're doing. And so we're gonna see if they do or not. Um, the second thing I have, Mr. Lewis brought up this stuff about lenders, uh, capping the interest. So on the next meeting, we will have a resolution for this, Mike, to send to the, to the state legislature.
Awesome.
We'll, we'll draft, we'll draft a, a resolution and we'll have that ready to go. So we need it up there. The last thing I got is our new phone system. I hate it. I hate calling and getting a automated voice. Okay. I believe that we pay Georgia to answer the phone and that's what she needs to do. So let's relook at that phone because nothing is worse than calling. You have reached the city of Grants. For Water Department, dial two two two. For, you know? No, we wanna talk to it live body. If it's after hours, I don't have a problem getting an automated system. But, I mean, calling, and I don't know who else has called the city since we did this, but I have several times. And I'm not, I'm not good with that, okay? I'm just, I'm not good with that. So let's see what we can do about that.
I just called to talk to Denise today and I was like...
Okay, um... And I would like to give a ditto to Greg. Just keep pressing it. Keep pressing. I do not mind the bitch calls about that. I keep telling them to come to the city council meeting and obviously, none of them are showing up. Because I'm sure they don't want all of us to tell them, go deal your dope someplace else. So I think that's why they're not coming.
Well, I hear from the officers that it's, it's their, it's their day and night.
Fantastic. Go ahead, Laura.
Counselor Lewis and I met with OMI this week and some of their regional managers and state managers. And we expressed, um, that the current administration and the current council were really concerned about the appearance of our parks and that we wanted them to step up the services and that we had, um, a higher level of expectation than what was happening. And they were very receptive and are supposed to start making some changes. Wayne, who's our local manager, came in today to talk to me about, to follow up. And so, but we did express some dissatisfaction in, in some of the services that we're receiving from them and, um, that we would like for them to, to improve and make some improvements.
Uh, you're, are you gonna come up with a list of, of what we need them to do?
Yes, um, they did say that we should...
We already got a partial list.
They said we should meet with Wayne and, um, give them a list of the things that we feel like need to, to be improved on. And so we have that already going.
Mayor, uh, on a different note, I forgot to bring this up. Chief Vanderburg, um, now during the Christmas holiday, uh, we were out at the cemetery with quite a few other people. And it was very heartening to hear that, uh, we have a thief out there. Um, I was wondering if you could possibly, um... Just, uh, make your, have your officers just make presents that they're around, that they're, they're watching. I, I can't believe that somebody so heartless would do what they did, you know, as for stealing items off of grave sites. So, um, if you would, can you please do me that favor? I'm not saying to have officers sit there and just make their presence and let them know that we're watching them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
On that note, I'd like to go back to this meeting...
Go right ahead.
That we had with OMI. Uh, I was proud of our city manager. It's kinda fun seeing a woman chewing on the, the back end of some of these guys from Denver and, and these regional, uh, directors and all this. And telling them what we expect, and Laura appreciated you, uh, you had backbone like I haven't seen, you know, in this, in this area in a while.
Fantastic. On that note, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting.
So moved.
Secretary, all in favor, say aye. opposed? Have a good night. We'll see you guys on the twenty-fourth, but I'll see you soon. Thank you. Dearest Traffic Safety Service. Here you go, Greg. There's another thing for you.
So there's other events on the calendar, but we have...
Mexico DOT Traffic Safety Division and the Safe Work in Mexico. Have the banner at the Capitol. Martin Heinz at the Capitol.
Hey Steve, how are you? How were your holidays? Quiet? Arizona? Got snowed in Arizona? Really? Oh, I bet that's pretty.
I sent an email to you today, but none of my emails went out because I didn't have internet all day. I was hoping you'd come on. Yeah. We have, uh, uh, so I did approve, you know, it was PO for that and so... I picked up my mail this afternoon. I didn't go through it. I noticed it looked like there was a couple of POs in there, so I think that might be one of them. But as of today, I'll email you a copy of that.